I'm talking to folks this weekend. I'm still talking to people.
No, that's.
Kristen can't make it tonight, so I'm sitting in his chair. What's that? Oh, that's okay.
Sorry.
All right.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we see Brian West.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Come on up.
Yeah, you can sit over there. I'm sitting here.
So first on the agenda, we have resilience of Steve. We're wondering, would you guys mind terribly if we had someone else jump ahead of you who has a really quick agenda item? Yeah, sorry to get you up.
Please do.
Yes, it's a place to grow. I believe you had an item to bring before us.
Hi, I'm Jen Legere and I'm with a place to grow. We are just coming to site plan review so that we can add one additional child's capacity. The state just changed their licensing rules to go from forty square feet per child to thirty-five square feet per child. This will allow us to add one additional child in our toddler room, which if everyone knows infant and toddler capacity is absolutely lacking in the state in our highest demand. We have several hundred children on our waitlist, so adding one doesn't help a lot, but it will help one family and go a little bit further. So that's what we're asking for, one whole child.
In your packet, I'll explain what your packet is. It's this one, it says a place to grow. The first page is the old legislation. The second page is the new legislation. The third page is a email from the state of New Hampshire inspector concurring the number of children to be brought to fifty-three. That goes into the backside of that page. And then your fourth page is a layout of the building.
So should we be invoking jurisdiction?
It isn't a formal application.
Okay.
What we're doing is, I'm sorry, it isn't a formal application. What we're doing is really considering what would be an expedited site review for this. And all of the evidence points to the fact that this change is an absolutely appropriate thing to do for the site.
Okay.
I think our plan was, was to take the signed application and submit and give her a copy and then attach one to the site plan.
Okay.
Just so that we, so we have on record that the approved number is fifty-three because what we have is evidence that says the approved number is fifty-two.
Okay.
And we don't want that record to go unamended.
So what do we need to do?
I have an application in my office, which I forgot to bring in.
Okay.
For you to sign. Do you have one with you to sign? I have two. My plan was is to have her sign two and we could have one as a record and one you could take with you.
Actually, did I give it to you?
I can grab it right now.
I guess while he's grabbing it, does anyone have any thoughts or concerns or questions?
And other than adding a child, there are no new requirements mandated by the state. Is that correct?
There's a lot of new requirements by the state. But in terms of capacity, no.
But the reason that you started with fifty-two and we approved fifty-two because that's what the state allowance would have been.
Yes, yeah. So we have, it's forty square feet per child is how we were originally measured for our capacity. Now we're measuring it thirty-five square feet per child, so it's, that's the only change.
Are you at capacity?
Oh, God, yeah. We have hundreds of kids on our waitlist. I could triple our school easily.
Good for you.
It's, it's good for us, but there's that much need for this town.
Yeah, it's not great for two hundred people.
It's, it's really not. And we, we have one site in Durham that's licensed for ten with another hundred on the waitlist. So it, there's really true need for capacity building, which is the next conversation, but we'll let this happen first.
So you've been, how many, how many children do you have there before this legislation change or whatever?
So even though our license capacity is fifty-two, our typical operating capacity is thirty-nine. So we'll be at forty for our normal operating capacity now. So, yeah. We never operate at capacity because we don't fill like bathrooms and kitchens. We don't use our kitchens as classrooms and things like that, so.
How many people do?
Said one toilet for every twenty kids?
Yeah.
And you have two toilets?
Three.
You have three?
Yeah, there's two, there's two downstairs and one upstairs. Yeah.
Have they carried around?
There's three baths, yes.
You have two bathrooms downstairs?
Two down. There's one in the hallway, one in the main, like room, main area, and then one upstairs. It's in the stairwell. It's, so if you probably look on the first floor in the stairwell area, yeah, yeah.
Okay. You have a.
Well, so I, I was gonna make a motion if, if it's appropriate. People can still, we can still have discussion after the motion is made.
Sure.
I'm not exactly sure how to word it, but I'll, I move that we approve bumping up capacity from fifty-two to fifty-three.
Second, second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. I preliminarily signed the priority.
You were saying that you would be running at forty, but you have the capacity for fifty-two, but you have all these people on the waiting list.
Yep.
Why don't you care?
So it's a, it's a great question. I mean, there's things like your kitchen. You don't, we don't put children in our kitchen in terms of classroom and have that as part of our capacity. Our lobby used to be measured as part of our capacity. We're actually taking the lobby out because it's not a classroom. So we're actually taking away five spaces in our configuration and new measurements, but adding this new one. It's, it depends on the age of the students and the ratios of the classrooms, like what makes sense to actually run it at. Just because our preschool classroom can hold twenty students, the ratio is one to eight, so we tend to operate at sixteen and not bring in a teacher for four students because that would mean a net loss for that particular teacher. So there's a lot of math that goes into like why we operate lower than our actual capacity. Yep, of course. So while I'm here, can I introduce another topic for the board that's gonna come to the board eventually? So I was just chatting with Mark a little bit. HB fifteen sixty-seven passed legislation last year for the state of New Hampshire. I actually worked with Chuck Grassi to write this piece of legislation to remove site plan review for family childcare providers. So only eight towns in the state of New Hampshire are in compliance with this piece of legislation. So this is something we're gonna need the town to look at and to modify zoning in relationship to this particular piece of legislation. So I brought some information with the actual piece of legislation here and a recent event that we did with BEA about the piece of legislation and what it means for towns to give you some more insight into it. But if you have questions, you know, as a zoning board for what does this mean? How do we update this piece of legislation in our own policies? I wrote it, I'm here, I'm happy to help you with it and take a look at it, but.
What is, what is the difference between, I think we talked about this when you were last in. What's the difference between family daycare and a more commercial daycare like what you're running?
That's a really good question because, so family childcare is typically for twelve or less students. There's now a new category of commercial childcare called a small group childcare center that's also twelve or less, but that's in a commercial setting, not a residential setting. So we're really looking at what's happening inside of a residence and, and then commercial is not in a residence. So the new small group childcare center could be using a home for family childcare type business, but you don't have to live there anymore, so.
So there's a limitation on, on number of students for different classes?
Correct, yeah.
So we, we don't require a site plan for residential uses?
Not according to your zoning.
Right, we, we follow the state legislature for number of students per threshold.
Threshold.
But then we also allow the planning board to review the site and that's what this legislation does.
Even in a residential.
Correct.
So again, families, was it twelve students or fewer?
Twelve or less, mm-hmm, yeah.
So we are reviewing when someone's home in a residential area for not in ages.
Yeah.
But it's because it hasn't been applied for.
Yeah. There's, there's a lot of barriers.
To amend our ordinance, all state.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure I brought it to the board because I was gonna be here anyways and I'm like, this is the town I'm in. Like, I wanna make sure we're doing this. And the reason why we really introduced this piece of legislation is because it helps support capacity building. It really is, anytime you have to come to site plan review, it adds time, money, cost, and infrastructure to, you know, something that you're trying to do. And family childcare is a really important and flexible alternative. And our military is currently begging us to open more family childcares because they don't have enough care for their National Guard on weekends.
So is it really the lack of staff, qualified staff? Is that why there are more, because we know the need is here.
No, I would actually say it's location. Ability to find a location is, it took me two years to find this location. So if you guys remember, I was at our place on Commercial Drive and then I was temporarily located at the church. And then here, it took me two years to find that new site. It's a long time, the processes and like the requirements are really rather extraordinary. So any growth that we're seeing in, because we franchised our company, we're really looking at growing in that family childcare sector because there are so many restrictions in commercial spaces and ability to find properly zoned, located, commercial spaces. I mean, I don't wanna be next to Walmart and Lowe's, which is where I'm typically allowed to be zoned for commercial childcare. We were blessed with these thirteen acres, you know, here on one twenty-five. But typically you're put in shopping plazas like Little Sprouts is in, you know, Stratum. It's really not the best place for childcare to be. So we're looking at these family childcare models to create smaller business models that we can support in more residential or small commercial settings that are more appropriate for care for kids. Yeah.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
If you please.
Is that you, it's effective now?
Yeah, signed into law in September of twenty twenty-four.
Okay, you have extra copy?
This is the legislation here and that's the information from the BEA.
If you leave that with my office, I will scan every inch of it and send it out in an email.
Yeah, absolutely. That's for you guys, so.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, and I'm happy to help with any questions that you guys have, but you know, truly, capacity building is so important. So anything we can do when we're looking at our regulations for childcare, and I'd love to go through them with you, to help support capacity building because there really is a true need in this, in this area to help with that, so.
I would a hundred percent agree.
Yeah.
I remember going to childcare down at the bottom of Great Hill and with a zip line in between trees. So who, who really wants to go to childcare, you know, at, at the end of a strip mall? You know?
Yeah.
It's not where our children belong.
Yeah. I mean, we're, we're truly blessed where we are, but not everyone has the gift of thirteen acres.
Right.
And as far as questions go, Mark has your email.
Yeah.
So we can independently send you a question.
Yep.
Absolutely.
I'll share that along with this document.
And this particular piece of legislation is gonna be back again this coming year to remove the conditional use permit portion. So I would anticipate further revisions to this, to, to get rid of that conditional use.
You're absolutely right. It should be reflected within our ordinances, but state law always trumps any local ordinance that we have. But you're absolutely right that we should change that.
Awesome. Thank you guys, appreciate it.
Okay, resilience, thank you. Yes, thanks for your patience.
We're actually out of time.
Time's up.
Water pass.
We're here.
Sorry, do you guys mind turning the mic on?
We're here and we're happy to proceed however you want. So I mean, basically, we were talking about the drive down. We're here to help you through this process. We can go line by line through drafts. We can take initial feedback. We can focus on one item tonight. At the end of the day, we can help with whatever level of edits you want on some or all of the drafts that have been provided. The other thing just to keep in mind is something we can provide. As you get further along and you have some level of competence in the drafts, you can still have questions and things you wanna talk about at public hearings, things you're uncertain of. We included a little bit of text at the beginning of each of the drafts just to provide a little context and kind of highlight some of the bigger changes. But you'll remember at the forum, the public forum, we created these profile sheets that kind of gave a bigger presentation of what that regulatory tool was. We can do something that's closer to that. We just didn't wanna be drafting things and then have you decide either you don't wanna move forward with the regulation or you wanna change it substantially. But the, the four that were sent out to you in your packet for tonight, we worked on with Mark, who you've met, and then we met with, with Kristen and with Glenn and went through and got some of their initial feedback. But I'm sure they'll have additional feedback because I'm sure Mark Kennedy was away on vacation, which we were very happy for him. And so we haven't had a chance to get his feedback or any of your planning board's feedback. So I guess Stephanie, that's just at the outset. I think maybe one of the first things is how does, does the group know how you wanna proceed or do you wanna talk about that or? Glenn or Mark at first.
Yeah, I guess does, does anyone have any strong feelings about proceed? I don't.
Well, I have an idea.
I do.
Okay. All ears.
I mean, I, I really want us to make sure that our ADU ordinance reflects state law, so they've made the changes. We need to go forward and, and make those and have our ordinance be compliant. And we really need to work on the multifamily ordinance.
Yeah.
And the, the board has, has the board, you sent these out last week, Mark, to everyone?
Yes, last, two weeks ago, Thursday, Friday.
So I, people need to really look at the workforce housing in the multifamily because we're, we're gonna be advocating for dramatic changes in density.
Yes.
And dramatic changes in density are necessary for us to get these developments built. And there's gonna be pushback. I, that's one of the things we, we saw with the forum that we had. There are people that are not enamored of this idea. And they're going to come to our public forums and our public hearings on these ordinances. So the board has to be very comfortable with what we're doing.
So if there's a question about water, if you can introduce a lot more houses, not houses necessarily, but dwellings in families, you're gonna use more water.
Absolutely.
And we're relying on a few people who say, oh, there's plenty of water in that aquifer. But if that starts going dry for whatever reason, who pays?
I mean, that's an age-old question. I mean, now for, for multifamily developments that will be using the densities that we're talking about here, they're going to be most likely using community water systems. Community, because community water systems are dependent upon the number of connections to that system to make them a community water system. And once they fall into that realm, the testing, the upfront testing that's required to see what impacts are to the aquifer that's being taken from and the monitoring that is required during the life of the community system, much more intense than anyone exhibits with a single septic system. You can have, well, anybody can really have a fairly unhealthy water system at their own house. You, because endemic in New Hampshire are some rather dangerous things that happen naturally in our water, arsenic being one of them. And you could, there, right now, there are thousands of homes in New Hampshire that use wells that have unsafe levels of arsenic in them. And with a community water system, that is not gonna be the case.
But a community water system is gonna rely on what source for the water?
The same source that we all do, groundwater.
So, my point.
Well, the, I understand your point, but I was on the governor's commission for groundwater in the, in the nineties and early two thousands for almost eight years. And the state of New Hampshire is blessed in that we are dropping straws with wild abandon all over the state and not running into this issue. So one would think eventually we're going to run into this issue. And I guess that's when we'll discuss how to deal with it. Because efforts by the groundwater commission to say any subdivision over eighteen lots, say, would have to drop a third of the wells before an approval was given, absolutely failed with the state legislature every single time. No interest in that kind of planning for the resource because the resource is so strong.
The problem is that you never know, you don't have enough water until it doesn't come.
That's absolutely true.
And at that point, now everybody's gotta suffer.
That, there's, I, I have no answer for you on that.
All right, I'm just saying.
I mean, USGS mapping for the town of Brentwood shows that we have some incredible aquifers. I'm, I'm like those found in neighboring towns, except with the exception of Kingston, which is like, which is likewise really gifted with groundwater.
We'll hope it stays that way.
Does, does that mean, like, when you say incredible and gifted, I mean, has that been put into some sort of numerical?
Yeah, yeah, the, the, the groundwater resource on Pine Road.
Yeah.
According to USGS, extraordinary. Saturation thickness of hundreds of feet.
Wow.
It was actually testing, was it Weston Sampson? Who did the about fifteen, eighteen years ago?
No, you're so, you're so silly. It was like thirty years ago now.
I, I remember, you know, asking an ignorant question at the time. So he said that the yield on, on the Pine Road aquifer was a million gallons. And so I said, what, what, a million gallons from what? And he said, that's a million gallons a day, sustainable yield. So a million gallons every.
So there, there, there isn't a good answer for what you're saying other than we have been dropping straws with wild abandon for sixty years now. And we're, we're really water fortunate.
But it also sounds like it could become an issue for a single-family development or a multifamily development at some point in the future and it could be either. So it doesn't seem like something that you can use to fight the state law for workforce housing.
Exactly, and we're, we happen to be in a community where we have a lot of empirical evidence that says we are not groundwater challenged.
Right.
We, we have the water in certain areas, but the question is how to move that water to other sections of town.
Right.
That one thing that was a takeaway, I think it was in the, in the multifamily, there was actually some discussion about density and the number of units proposed. I couldn't quickly find it here, but I mean, that, that to me was a shocker just to see the number of possible units you could get. You know, of course, depending on water or, you know, sanitary and water situations. And that's going to also be a major shock to townspeople who will listen or come to meetings.
It's, it is the sole issue.
I mean, that, that just stood out, I was reading this this morning, that just jumped right out. So I'm wondering, rather than to just, you know, keep putting forth all these numbers, should, should Brentwood look at hiring a environmental engineer? What is like Gold Environmental, for example? They do all sorts of wetland delineations. I'm, I'm just wondering if there's some way of us qualifying what reasonable amount of land that we would have in our proposed multifamily zone that would, would support, you know, anywhere near the suggested level of density.
So we did a cursory look and we talked about this with Mark Fugere on Zoom a couple of weeks ago. Your existing multifamily zones along the northern part of the community are largely built out. So there's a couple of lots that could have a bigger development on them. Your commercial industrial near Pine Road is largely industrial.
Right, and you have some good points about keeping it that way.
Yeah, or not developable because it's a large chunk that's just out of play. So I would.
A large chunk?
Yeah.
That was just taken out of play.
Taken far.
So that does leave, at the very least, it does leave the one twenty-five commercial corridor. There will be densities, the densities are high, the suggested densities are higher to make them actually work number-wise. You could actually produce some workforce housing units. If you were to get everybody in agreement of a number and you were to see this pass at town meeting and you were to see some developments happen, it doesn't mean you can't revisit the density requirement.
But to get it passed initially, it has to be something that's palatable, palatable and understanding that makes common sense to residents.
Or you can wait and be sued.
Right, so I guess my point is, do we, do we wanna do some investigation before we start approving some of these higher density numbers to see if in fact our landmass even supports that? In other words, are we scaring people for no practical reason? I guess the word scaring I should.
The one concern I have is that you're gonna identify which parcels are developmentally appropriate for this and what's that gonna be like when that gets out?
That thing, I, I think that the developers are smarter than that. I think they've already figured it out and have the knowledge and the, and the ability to learn what parcels work and what parcels don't.
Are you, are you suggesting, Bruce, that we should have some, pay somebody to show us what a development would look like?
Yeah, something similar to that. I mean, if, it, it, you know, these numbers aren't bad and they actually are appropriate for achieving the workforce housing units that Brentwood needs, that all the towns need. But I guess my only point is if, if Brentwood, the Brentwood landmass that's available wouldn't support anywhere near those increased density numbers, it, it, it's only going to, I don't think we should be, you know, asking the townspeople to support density far greater than what science may show us it's even possible. You know, so if we can kind of balance it out, learn like what Glenn's saying, basically, what, take a couple, or take a couple parcels as an example and just look at this ordinance, compare that to the soil types on these parcels that you're, you're speaking about. I guess I'm just to get.
But the, the purpose. The, the purpose of having the increased density really means that what they're going to have to do is do developments that have both community septic systems and community water.
Oh, absolutely.
So with that being stated, it doesn't matter what the underlying soils are. All you have to, all you're, all you're avoiding are wet areas that you can't build on.
Correct, but you, in, in certain, on certain parcels, you're gonna have to reserve a good portion of the land for the septic.
Absolutely.
So I guess I'm just, I'm asking some, probably I'm not explaining it in basic, basic enough terms. Can anyone, if we have to hire somebody for a nominal amount of money to look at a couple of parcels to figure out, with these densities that we're looking to suggest to townspeople that they approve, are they practical? I mean, are those numbers reasonable for XYZ parcel, for example? I'm just thinking, if we, if we find our landmass only supports half this density, why not tell the, the townspeople that's, that's the number we should go for so they're not afraid or they're not concerned that we're, you know, going overboard on a too great a density increase?
At, at the, at the risk of uttering a name that may cause some people to throw something at me, Joe Falzone has stated that he would look at whatever numbers we come up with because he's looked at parcels in town trying to use our existing ordinances
This work has already been done.
And has, has been unable to find any land that, that he could work with to develop under those, those concepts. So we could, if, we don't have to work with Joe Falzone, we could work with John LaRiviere, we could work with any other developer and have them look at the numbers and give us their take on that.
I think, I think that'd be, be admirable to do that so that when we go to the townspeople, we, we seem credible. We're not just throwing numbers out there that aren't supportable, that aren't reasonable.
That's the number.
It's only going to anger people, it's not going to encourage them to, to appreciate the process.
Maybe we, we have a resident of town who owns a very substantial environmental and engineering firm and we could maybe ask him as a resident to look at this. And we could maybe ask him as a resident to look at this. Because Wayne Morrell has, he has looked at, he has actually looked at a lot of property in town with the, the view of trying to put multifamily on it, or his clients in the past.
That's the number that Joe came up with himself.
So.
Was ten with a bonus of two.
The, the, the con, the concept of a development of a unit number is not rocket science. But below a certain number, it absolutely doesn't work. It doesn't work, and we have thirty years of experience in that.
Joe has been in my office several times, and we've had several conversations. And that's the number that he came up with, and he's looked at properties and said he can't do anything unless, you know, that's the number.
Well, yeah, I didn't know the numbers.
And it starts, because it's so different from what we're.
Ten with a bonus of two. That's, and that's pretty stock number, it's pretty standard number.
Pretty common.
Yeah.
I don't think we're that different than other towns.
It's just so different.
From what you have.
Yeah, from what we currently have.
Yeah.
I would say if Wayne or someone like that could take a quick look without us having to pay him, but I would be hesitant to have to pay someone to do that.
So I don't want to do the footwork for developers either. Why am I doing their footwork? They can do the footwork. If a developer said, those are the numbers, then I can point at a piece of property that we were directly talking about, and it wouldn't work unless that was the number. And I, and that was the one on the corner of South Road and one twenty-five specifically, so.
And, and make no mistake about it, one of the team members with resilience knows these, knows these development models very well. Mark Fugier has worked on this side of things for a very long time.
And would even go higher than that.
He would go, he would go, you, you're right, he would go, he would go higher.
Right.
Yeah, right, that's the minimum.
And, and it's probably the maximum for us to be able to get through the voters of Brentwood.
I mean, I think one of Mark's ideas too was that at the number you have, you're more likely to get something like townhomes than garden-style apartments. They're going to still be, you know, under that four hundred and whatever thousand dollar workforce housing range. But, um, they're going to probably pencil out better. So it'll depend on the develop, the developer, what their plan is and what their site's like. But it's definitely moving in the right direction. It's not going to be an easy conversation, because it is a big change.
It's a big change.
So how far out of the density qualification are we? How many more houses do we have to have, or multifamilies, or garages that are occupied? Do you have a number for that?
The Planning Commission actually has a number for that, because they did a, um, a regional housing assessment two years ago.
Yep.
So you can actually go on their website and look at the housing need, and they did it municipality by municipality. And they call out what the deficit is for each town for different housing types.
And it doesn't take into consideration the, uh, what we have for soils, what we have for water, uh, what's available.
It only takes, the, the only thing they factor in is whether or not there, there is municipal water or sewer. Because that just means you have to, you're going to be developing with community systems, um, approvable by D E S.
What was that company, uh, where would I get them?
It's the Rockingham Planning Commission.
So there's two things, there's the fair share, like, are you providing your fair share of affordable housing within the region? So that's part of the calculations they did for Housing Needs Assessment. And then what are your regulations for future development? Like, do you have what's in place that complies with the now fifteen-year-old workforce housing ordinance? Some of the language that was repealed here years ago. Um, and so the approach that's before you with these different tools, it's giving you a couple of different strategies. It's not like all your eggs are in one basket with multifamily or with ADUs. The ADU piece largely is being changed for you by the state, so you're just trying to get in compliance with the state regs.
Catching up.
Like your previous conversation on, uh, daycare. But the multifamily is a bigger one that you could make some changes on, and then the workforce housing is ena, enabling somebody who comes in who's willing to provide units that would be tracked as workforce housing, and to do the hard work of tracking them or reporting to the town, to have a language and a mechanism the planning board can use. So those, those three stand out, those, I'm assuming that's why you highlighted those three.
Those, those are, if we don't address that using this money, it's never going to be addressed.
Right.
And it will come to a lawsuit at some point, but that is, you, you never know, that's a crapshoot. Maybe it ends up being Kingston that gets sued, you, you don't know. But once a community does get sued, like Atkinson did in the early eighties, that town's name is associated with that forever. So I'd prefer it not be Brentwood.
And you're going to have to change the regs, and you're going to have to pay a fee, a huge fine, and you're going to get the development you didn't want.
Regardless.
Without any say. So, yeah, it's an unfortunate path. I think what you've been doing is hard work.
Legacy is horrible.
And this doesn't put you in an easy position, because you're trying to continue to have these conversations and make some changes that could work here in a way that you are comfortable with.
But if, if, if all the things are changing your ordinances and whatnot, to enable people to have additional people living there. If they kind of say, nah, I don't think so. What do you do?
If they don't, if they choose not to develop the units?
Yeah, I mean, I don't.
Yeah, you have no control over that part. So.
But at least we can't get sued.
Right.
If we need it possible.
Yeah, it might not be, maybe you don't get additional workforce housing units, because somebody doesn't want to do it, even with the changes, it's very possible.
So then does it become a responsibility of the town?
No.
To try to purchase property and then?
No.
Some towns are doing that because they're choosing to for other reasons, but not because you'd have to.
You have to create an opportunity, whether someone takes advantage of that opportunity, that's on them.
But you won't get sued if no one takes advantage.
If the opportunity is there, then you meet, you've met the letter of the law.
Totally.
Yep.
Yep. And I think you have a great track record as a community with the housing chapter you did. I mean, the fact that people are saying, why are you still asking us about housing? Shows that you've been getting out there and having this conversation, even if people don't want to talk about it anymore. You're, as a planning board, your job is to make sure the town's complying with the law, you're being advised by professional planners, you went after to get this grant. Like, your track record of trying to take this on, as Glenn said, is really good, and if you could get some of these changes, whatever, however you feel they're most palatable, get them across at this town meeting or a future town meeting, you will have done a great job.
If the legislation doesn't pass at town meeting, at least we've made an attempt.
Exactly.
We've made an attempt to be compliant.
Right.
This board has, so we are not culpable. If you don't make that attempt, I I don't think you're doing your job.
I have a question. This is pretty basic. So I, I, I understand the concern with regard to legality on the workforce housing. Statutory requirement. But what, what, what's the concern with regard to having a certain density for, for multifamily?
Well, this, one of the pieces of legislation that passed this year said that towns will allow multifamily development in their commercial zones. And we have until July first of next year, the legislature gave us one town meeting to make necessary changes. And so we need to address that new state law in some manner. And that manner is, we don't presently allow multifamily in our commercial zone. So we have to do something about that. We, we conveniently, um, or presciently have some folks helping us with state funds to do that in advance of being told to do that by the state in July.
Yeah.
July of twenty-six.
Yeah, it was, it was adopted in July of, of twenty-five, and the legislature said you have a year to figure this out. So we have to do something. And we could, we could do something. Um, our something could be just expanding our multifamily zone as it exists now, that we know has been unsuccessful for twenty-five years, and just say, yeah, it's allowed all the way up and down one twenty-five.
Right.
That'd be step one.
And if, and if that went to court, um, the developer taking it to court would say all the town did was use an ordinance they had thirty years of experience not working being applied in a bigger area of town. And that would not look good. So it would not be, my perspective is, it would not be seen as meeting the mandate that the state legislature just gave us for the next year.
But to play some devil's advocate, I mean, isn't that really, you know, up to the developer in terms of, you know, its burden of proof and to show, you know, that, um, you know, this was.
Oh, yeah, but they're, they're emboldened now, because they didn't have a state law before that they could fall back on that said you will make opportunity for multifamily. And the court did not think you would make opportunity for multifamily by offering something that really has been shown not to work.
Well, but when you say not to work, again, just playing devil's advocate, I mean, you know, that, that's really up to their, you know, situation economically. Someone like Falzone is saying, well, you know, economically, it's not going to work for me unless you have this level of density. I mean, that's on him, isn't it?
No, he can't produce a workforce housing unit, someone, something that somebody who can only afford up to four hundred thousand can afford to buy or rent.
Yeah, no, I'm not talking about workforce housing, but multi, multifamily. I mean, I understand the workforce housing.
I, there hasn't been, I mean, there has been a low-level opportunity to sue the town for not providing a workable multifamily ordinance. That's, that's existed the entire time that we've had our ordinance. We felt that we provided something that allowed development. But Mr. Valzone told me fifteen years ago that he tried to, on, when there were additional parcels available on North Road for this development, and he was unable to use our ordinance to produce those units.
That's because he couldn't make enough, you know, profit margin.
Sure, he has a, he has a profit margin, absolutely.
But, but, I mean, that's certainly something a court would take into consideration.
It absolutely is.
If it's not feasible for developers because of our ordinance, that, that is something that's on us.
Mark, you said they used the, uh, figure of ten-two. Did he give you numbers to back that up?
When Joe Falzone says that's the number, that's the number. The man has built
That's good, but.
Hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of.
Be able to review, maybe it's eight-two.
Hey, if you want to ask Mr. Falzone to meet with his accountant and to go over those figures with you, then that's okay, but Joe wouldn't really know all that math in his head, that he pays people to do that math. But he certainly has a number that he knows works and what doesn't work. I, I know that guy, everybody gives this guy a bad, he's a great guy to talk to. He's a really good guy to talk to.
The quality of his developments have been first rate.
He's not the devil incarnate, he's just a businessman, and he's very kind with his time. He would answer any question for you that you may have, guaranteed.
So, so we, we have to rip the, the bandage off and invite a couple of these people to come in.
He even said he'd come in and talk to us. He said, hey, if you want me to come and talk to you, I'll hundred percent do that.
Margin on this, is that what you get through for, for ten-two? I mean.
I'm sure he has a number.
Developers now are, are making some huge money. I just don't think we should get ten-two as the, the gospel proof. What's backing it up?
It's a fair comment.
Well, you'll hear their argument. Isn't that why I think townspeople may think that you're somewhat credible in, in advancing an ordinance request? But if we just go in there with four to five times the density that we now allow, people, I mean, when I read that, I thought, this couldn't be Brentwood's, uh, suggested regs, this must be for some town with, like, Exeter with municipal water and sewage, and I went back and went again.
Can you point to where you're looking in terms of this increased density?
Yeah, I was looking, uh, I read it online today, yes, that's, that's.
So we, I mean, obviously, we can have Mark address this.
We can, and I was just looking at my phone, because Mark and I did a project for Farmington, and we did a project, Crystal and I did a project for Rye last year, and the same conversation came up, and twelve is low, but I can, we can provide those numbers. Some of the towns that have much higher numbers do have water and sewer, so we would want to take them out of it.
Let me see, twenty-two or something, twenty-two to twenty-four.
Definitely twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
But what we can do, and what I can add to my notes, this is the type of stuff we can help you with. Um, and we'd encourage you to continue to talk to folks like you're talking about tonight. I can ask Mark to provide some examples of developments with these counts, and if he has any of the financials, to give a sense of like how much units cost and all that, so I'll work with Mark on that. And then we can give you a count of communities with their density requirements that have water and sewer, so you can get a sense for similar kind of commercial corridors, mixed-use type of corridors. Does that help?
I think we, all that does is make me envious of municipal water and sewer. Because we're never going to have that, so having those.
No, but we can focus on this, we'll focus on the well and septic towns.
Yeah.
Those numbers.
Because other, when, when push comes to shove, and people get heated at a public hearing, I, I don't want to give them the thought that we were even looking.
No, we'll, we'll stick with comparable. Yep.
Don't match.
Because that, it really drives the density down, not having public water.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
It's a bunch of upland soils that get eaten up with effluent.
Yeah, ab, absolutely.
Okay. Yep.
We have to at least address it, even if it fails, and I don't, I, I think that we have the power and the ability to explain why it shouldn't fail. But we at least have to, we have to make the, the appropriate call on this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Presentation, presentation will be key at that point, especially in town meeting.
And, and, but, and the thing that is helpful is that for pretty much all of the, most, if not all of the ordinances that we're talking about, it's going to be a very similar, similar discussion where it's like, look, regardless of, of your opinion, we have to acknowledge that we have legal requirements, statutory requirements. And it could, things could get significantly worse for us if the day comes when, when that somebody brings a lawsuit and you know, so I, I think that, that, that discussion will be somewhat consistent with, with, um, so I think that we'll have a lot of opportunities to, you know, drive that point home, that, that, look, we have certain statutory requirements here, and, and we need to protect our town from the possibility of litigation.
Defended lawsuits successfully for the last forty years.
Just saying.
I'd like to convene, I think we all like to convene on that article for the Brentwood newsletter, this current edition that just came out this week.
Rather not have to defend it if we don't have to.
From being on the board a long time, this fall period leading into the holidays, and then first year goes by like a snap, so.
Talk about timeline?
Yeah, timeline, so the ADU is, is like Glenn said initially, that's a no-brainer.
Right.
So could we have an article, or would it be reasonable to have an article for next month, so that would be, well, September fifteenth is coming right up. To, to basically just discuss it, maybe just one at a time. If, if we throw out two or three items and have too long an article, people are just going to say, I know, I didn't want that, we told you we didn't want that, but maybe the ADU is the first one.
So you're thinking like a September, October, November series? Some three short articles driving home the.
That would be excellent.
State requirement, and then talking about some of the changes.
Yep.
We could draft them and run them by staff and the chairs and.
Gives everybody an opportunity to digest it, ask questions, bounce things back.
We're not throwing too much at one time. Do you want to start with the ADU one?
It's the easiest.
And then go to, what's the second hardest? You want to go to?
It's.
Multifamily.
I gotta say, I, I think we need to, we, we need to grab the bull by the horns and talk about the multifamily.
Should we do that first, then?
I think the ADU is a softball.
Yeah, let's.
It really is.
It's a softball.
If, if we, if we throw one out that's pretty easy, and it gets them thinking that when they see the newsletter, there's going to be something about housing, beautiful. They read a, they read the happy one.
It's a nice gateway.
You want to end with that, end with the softball, or throw the hard pitch first?
No, I think we don't want to scare people away, so.
Okay, start with the softball.
Start, start with the softball.
So we're, we're talking about something that would come out to the residents in, in October. Now, November, it might be wise to start to talk about, uh, multifamily.
We have, we have to.
But I don't think we want to, until we meet with, um, you know, a developer and Wayne Morrell, the engineer from.
Yeah.
You, you probably aren't aware of him, but he's, he's actually in the Z B A here in town, so he has some connection to town boards. Uh, let him come in and, but that's something we want to. Uh, let him come in and, but that's something we want to probably. We don't even know what we want to advance in terms of the density right now, but maybe just a general article.
If we can keep it general, we don't have to list numbers.
Well, if we can get it happen, if that can happen, if we can, we can talk to some of these people in the next month's time, sure.
And the sooner the better, I think if we bring Falzone, Mr. Falzone in ASAP, he'll give us a good overview and of whether or not, you know, you're in alignment with his business practices. He is reasonable, he can give you some great information. And from there, um, same meeting, you could have Wayne there.
Well, yeah, I think that's good because there'd be some balance, it would be a development.
Exactly, and then a town member.
Businesses and, right, a town member.
And then workforce housing last is the holiday spectacular.
A peace dealer, a stance.
And, 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 and just, just going off that, because I, 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 I agree with this approach. I think ADU first makes sense, but I think that multifamily probably makes sense next just because I don't want people in town to feel like we're springing something on them.
Totally.
Like, sh- short, too short before town meeting, I mean, November's fine, but like if it gets to like the new year, then we're getting to the point where people are going to understandably start to feel like, okay, you're kind of springing this on us now.
That makes sense.
Um, and so I just want, want to be careful about giving people, you know, proper notice.
What you even have a statutorily required, uh, hearings.
Right, of course, but, 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 but I mean, in terms of introducing it in a newsletter type of setting.
I mean, perhaps the, the affordable isn't probably something that will, in terms of, uh, selling by a developer may not be the most important type of development that they're looking to build right now, where the focus of, the demand seems to be for single family. I'm, I'm just wondering if, it's just a thought, that maybe the ADU and the multifamily are more than plenty for this year. I, I just, I'm afraid you're going to get baby thrown out with a bathwater.
I, I think we have to address workforce.
I do, I do too, but I think that that's, it's a legitimate thing for the planning board. The planning board has to be, um, really supportive of that decision. So if they're, if they're, if we are not united on that, um, it will fail.
Yeah.
I was going to say the same thing, I agree with you.
The, the board needs to, um, we need to ponder that and discuss that. And what our decision is, has to be, there can't be any, it has to be bulletproof because bullets will fly.
And it's not like the residents aren't aware, because when we had the presentation, there was a lot of discussion
Yeah, there was.
Off the sideline about multifamily, ADUs, and not doing anything. We're not changing the world here, but
Right.
There wasn't anybody in this room that said, you can't not do something. We didn't know exactly what it was because, you know, things hadn't changed.
Legislature.
Hadn't changed at that point, now we know.
You had some big shifts.
Yeah.
That are being put on you.
But I don't think our residents are not aware that something's coming up. And, uh, to Bruce's point, I don't want to scare anybody.
No.
But the reality of having to do something, we really need to be all, uh, very united in this.
I, I, I think my concern about, and why I'm pretty adamant that we need to address workforce housing is because as opposed to these other statutes, I feel like the workforce housing one is the one that we've been out of compliance with for the longest, I, I mean, I think that, that's accurate. So that part of it i- is, is something that I think we need to keep in mind, that this, it's been a very long period of time that we have been out of compliance and we have an opportunity to, you know, a, a real opportunity right now to address it. And I think that we should think long and hard before we pass it up.
Yeah, I mean, with your planning board hat on, you don't have the luxury of putting your head in sand and representing the town well. So it is hard, you're having hard conversations and you're asking hard questions and you're doing your job as a volunteer.
Multifamily though will, will give some affordability or some options for people who would be in the affordable sections.
True.
I mean, I, I think, I think the board, you know, has limited credibility with townspeople. It's always hard, and coming back five or six years, people would vote for everything that was proposed. And the people who came out to your great presentation, we have to acknowledge that that could have been with a husband and wife attending, it could have been fourteen to eighteen family units that, that were there that night to comprise the forty-some odd respondents. But the darn Facebook thing on social media doesn't speak to facts that were presented that night. It just, uh, speaks to, you know, fears people have.
Sure.
And certainly, the workforce is a great start, we needed this, you guys did a great job. We also got to look at the devils in the details when you read through some of the proposed changes to the workforce housing, allowing, you know, some twenty-foot driveways, branching off into two extra units. I, I just, I want to see us make some incremental steps, I just take to see us, and I, hopefully I'm all on it. Hopefully people will acknowledge the fact that, uh, times have changed, situations have changed, and, um, just don't personally get that sense.
Was this help, like a helpful use of time to think about, have these bigger picture conversations and talk about timeline?
I think.
Yeah, I think it might be prudent for us to consider having like a work session to really focus on this.
Yep, yeah.
And we could all assign ourselves some homework to read through these carefully before it and come with some comments.
And let us know, Stephanie.
That should be near term as opposed to far term.
Yeah, I'm thinking like
Is the only thing I'm.
This month, if we could.
Yeah, I, that, I really do, I, I would impress that that is important.
Do you think it's feasible to invite the two, uh, people we spoke to to come in the first meeting in October?
Sooner.
Oh, I mean, sooner, but I'm just thinking, if Mark reaches out to him, he'll have to give him some proposed dates. I mean, two weeks would be great, maybe, and we're not asking them for a lot of detail, but just the general thought process that goes into them deciding.
What's your, um, couple of options?
I can certainly reach out to Mr. Morley.
Is there any possibility that the board, I'm really going to say this out loud.
Close to the mic.
Do the fourth Thursday in September as well?
I would do that.
I do, I do.
That's the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, yeah.
Maybe, I think that.
You suggest.
No, I know, I want to do it, um. I'm checking when the Gasset hearings are, it does not conflict, so.
And, and it doesn't, it does not thrill me to say that, but I think that we need to do that. It gives us another meeting. It gives us another meeting and it gives us the opportunity to start that meeting with two guest speakers, I think.
Yep.
And we're giving them ample time if we set, if we tell them we're asking for three weeks. As opposed to, we're, we do this today and we don't actually talk to them until Monday. It's really only ten days we're giving them.
Right.
And.
That's a great idea.
They're busy people, it would be nice if we were giving them closer to twenty days than ten days.
We effectively have about ninety-day window to get.
To do something.
That's right.
That's right.
And then start to post.
That might be, it might be difficult for me.
Well, just a shot.
Well, I had some other personal things that I wanted to get to. Meaning leaving Thursday after work and then driving six hours to be someplace for a long weekend. And that really puts a kibosh if I'm here till.
Yeah.
Nine at night, but hey.
That's on the twenty-fourth.
Well, we haven't set a date for that yet, it'll be in the month of September. But I don't want to do it on the third Thursday, and then if you eat up that, the last Thursday, then I'm going to be forced into it.
Next weekend.
We're, we're really only talking one more week if we go into the first.
Could we do a Wednesday? I know you have conflicts on Wednesdays, but some Wednesdays.
No, the, the last Wednesday would be fine.
I, I think I should reach out to both of them Monday morning and see where they're at. Joe is very receptive and if he can, he can, he, he'll tell me right away, boom, I'll be, you know, I can be there and.
Would, would a Wednesday night be better?
Oh, yes, a hundred percent, hundred percent.
Because I, I absolutely can, in, in my, the Wednesdays I use are at the beginning of the month.
That'd be lovely if you could do that, it'd be fantastic.
Is everyone else?
Doug?
I'm not sure.
I mean, at first I got to reach out to them and see where they're at, I think that they could make it, Wayne lives right in town.
Right.
If we can do the twenty-fourth, I'll make it work.
Joe knows that the, that there was a strong possibility that we would ask him to talk to the planning.
He's very receptive.
Okay.
Hundred percent.
And he was very.
What, what are you talking about, the twenty-fifth?
Wednesday, the twenty-fourth.
And then your regular meeting's on the second of October?
It'll be better.
Yes, for me, the Wednesday, yeah, the Thursday.
Wednesday's better for you, I, I'll make it work, yep.
And then, should we have resilience come or should we meet with them after?
I, I don't.
We're not available those two nights.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I don't think.
I don't think you need us.
Not that I want to exclude you, but I think it would be better for us to.
I really do think that, that we need to do this.
What we'll do ahead of the meeting though is we'll work on drafting the articles, like was suggested, and we'll talk with Mark when he gets back from vacation next week and get some numbers and some examples to you and we'll get them to.
Yeah, that would be good.
Stephanie, Kristen, and you guys. Um, so you can share them with people and it can be food for thought. Um, and then we can come back on the second, if you decide you don't need us on the second, just let us know.
Can I, dumb question, are these all draft, um, did you draft these?
Yeah. Yeah.
So the ones, there, there are ones that are marked draft, but then there are ones that aren't.
Yeah, some of them have a watermark, but they're all draft.
They're all draft.
We can change that so that they're all, they all say draft on them.
Is there, is there a way also to see where they deviate from the present?
They should be track changes, the versions you have don't look like that.
I don't see that.
Um, what I can do is I can send new P, I probably sent them to you guys as Word and it may, the track changes may have disappeared. So what I can do is, Mark Kennedy, I can send you PDFs that have the watermark and we can make sure the track changes get locked into the PDF.
Yep.
We can circulate those.
Yep, typically the way I do it is I take all your PDFs, I drag it into a file.
Perfect.
And then make a link from that file and send it to board members.
Okay.
So it isn't all.
I think when we sent them, we sent them as, we sent them as Word docs to the staff and to Kristen in case they wanted to track any additional changes. So, yeah, yeah, we could do that, it's already done, so it'll take two seconds.
I'm, I'm thinking something we could consider, which I don't know if any of us will actually be brave enough to do this, but possibly post a link to the articles after they come out.
Yeah.
Um, on Facebook, just to spread the word a little more.
Yeah.
It's going to open up the floodgates of negative comments, but.
But the floodgates are going to open anyways.
Like.
Yeah.
They are.
Be back as a gift.
And you just reiterate when the meetings are going to be and if they want to participate.
Yeah, be as transparent as you can. Yeah. If, 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 given that the floodgates are going to open, I'd rather us open them.
Yeah.
Than have them be broken open.
Point them in the direction of facts.
Yeah, right.
I mean.
There was one thing about the last article I wanted to mention and I wanted to apologize for. And this wasn't any, I, I didn't know this was going to happen, but at the bottom of that article, it says my name. It really wasn't an article that I, that I endorsed, well, I do endorse it, but it wasn't, I wrote it. It was supposed to be a message from all of you. So when I sent it to them, that's just what they did, so I will make sure in the next one that I correct that and tell them that it's from the entire planning board.
Or add your picture, you could add your picture.
And I do not accept that apology.
I'm sorry, who's them?
The, uh, the, uh, Brentwood Newsletter.
Oh.
I, I asked, I send them the article to print it and they automatically put my name at the bottom of it, I, I did not mean for them to do that. I saw that and I was like, I did not mean for that to happen, and I wanted to recognize that and I will correct that in the future.
With the possibility of that meeting on Wednesday, um, or the confirmation of the meeting on Wednesday, should we do it earlier? Instead of seven o'clock, should we start?
That's a groovy idea.
Yeah.
What would be a good time?
Five is the earliest I can.
Yeah.
About four.
Some still work. I'm here till four thirty.
Oh, you're here anyway.
Right.
Maybe five?
Five or five thirty, I would just stay through.
Five, five thirty?
Yeah, I can make either of those work.
Beaches that you provided.
And, and, and also it doesn't have to be set in stone tonight, because the chair has the authority to.
Yeah, we'll wait and see what the guests available.
Right.
Well, instead of having it seven o'clock, I'm just thinking.
Oh, yeah, I'm all for it.
Yeah, I just need to know a date and a time, so when I reach out to them, I can tell them.
Yeah, so it's, it's the twenty-fourth, twenty-fourth.
Five thirty.
Starting as early as five thirty?
Seventeen thirty, is that what you said?
Correct.
Yep.
Seventeen thirty.
I can honest, I can tell you for sure, that is not what I said, but tha- thank you for making that.
Yeah.
That math conversion for us.
No, that's good.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're a good group to work with.
This is an Iowa, this is an Iowa, we get into the detail, we all say, we like the concept.
Yeah, you keep thinking that, because it's going to get bloody.
There's still a good group.
You, you.
You may not all agree, but that's, you're working together.
You keep thinking that.
You stayed here a long time, so. They obviously have grown on you. Or they can't get rid of you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good night.
You too.
Appreciate it.
Done the.
Mastriano?
Mastriano, thank you for your patience.
For the record, I did try to text, uh, Falzone and see if I got an answer out of him for you guys while I was sitting there, but.
Didn't happen, huh?
No, it was a shot in the dark, sometimes he answers me, sometimes he ignores.
And even though we know you, if you could just, for the record.
Yeah, yeah, I was just waiting for him to pull it up there, so, um, for the record, Ryan Lavelle, Lavelle Associates, uh, surveying firm that partially prepared these plans for you guys. Last month I went into a large, um, kind of speech about what was going on here, so I'll just give a brief, a brief interlude here, so, uh, representing the Mastriano Group that owns this parcel at one eighty Route one twenty-five. Uh, it's approximately two point seven seven acres. So what currently exists on the property is basically a doggy daycare shown there on the, um, you're looking at the plan to the left, um, got a fenced-in area, et cetera, and then next to it is something that was before the board a couple of years ago, uh, for a site plan, which was a, um, used, um, auto sales. Um, the proposal in front of you guys, uh, is the contractor base, commercial contractor base, six, six units there, um, used for electricians, plumbers, anything like that, you know, a base of operations for their companies. Uh, it's a big need, not only in Brentwood, but, uh, throughout the state. Uh, fills a, a good need, um, and it's a good use of this commercial property on one twenty-five. Um, the bulk of the plan work has been done by Engineering Alliance. They, I have a couple of things in front of me that the board should also, um, responses to plan, um, on planned things that needed to be changed. Uh, he wrote a letter back to the town on how he changed them, um, as well as another letter to, the reviewing firm there, TEC, on all their comments and how they were addressed. It goes without saying that, that you'd be getting another letter from TEC and possibly Glenn on whether or not Engineering Alliance has in fact fulfilled these. And obviously, that could be something of a, um, condition. Am I, am I missing anything here?
Not from my perspective.
I, I guess I'll throw it out there too, that we would be doing a new septic design for this property that isn't improved by DES. Right now, we just did the new test pits, one of which was required for drainage out front. And another one right behind the, uh, auto sales place where we'd be doing a combined septic system, a brand new one for the contractor base, the doggy daycare and the auto sales all combined into one big stone and pipe field kind of shown right behind the, um, the auto place with that four K area, so. We got the test pit data for that, um, my firm will be doing that design, um, as, as a part of this whole construction process. So, again, if I'm, if I'm missing anything, if you guys have any questions, be happy to answer. Um, I didn't know, do you also want me to bring up the, the two waivers that are being requested? Would this be a good time? See where they are, so the two waivers you'll see on sheet one, um, on the left side. So we are requesting a waiver from section six point nine point two point two of the Brentwood subdivision rules and regulations requiring a thirty thousand system installed. The applicant requested an eighteen thousand gallons of turn. Sorry. And the idea behind that is that a similar waiver was requested and approved, I believe, next door when they did the storage facility. I know that I had some brief conversations with the fire chief, and then introduced the fire chief to Eric with Engineering Alliance, and they kind of went back and forth on, you know, where the cistern will be located, and whether or not they felt comfortable with, you know, sprinklers, no sprinklers, that type of thing. And I, I believe that they're in support of the, of the cistern. The second one is the, is the storm water management regulation that requires H I S mapping to be done on the site plans. High-intensity soil mapping is H I S, and I know that Engineering Alliance has had a conversation with the representative with T E C about whether or not they were in support of that waiver, and they said that they would be in favor of that waiver. High-intensity soil mapping is just a mapping style of soils that's usually done by a wetland scientist, or, well, soil scientist in this case. And it tells you soil groupings for the purposes of, you know, sometimes it would help with drainage and things like that, but we did the test pits in the drainage area. So, I think that the two engineers kind of have a good feeling of what soil groupings play with each other here, and that it would be an unnecessary fee to add little to the application, really.
So, what was the basis that you decided that fifteen thousand gallons is better than thirty?
Partially because of next doors. Having that same, same when they went through their site plan. They, I believe they requested, they were being asked for a thirty thousand, and they asked for a waiver for a fifteen thousand gallon cistern, and they were granted. And seeing as though it's adjacent to our site, it would seem like that's a waiver that's being, it's an additional cost, for I'm not sure how much gain to the fire department on, you know, missing out on fifteen thousand gallons.
But wouldn't you think that if you have a lot of commercial entities there, doing, oh, well, well, for instance, welding or other things, they're gonna be more liable to have fires and more density of the issue? Than, than cars and doggy care? I mean, that's not a lot of overhead.
And to the, to that point, I think we've seen before, the requirement for like sprinklers is based on the fire load. So you'd have to know what businesses were taking place, as Brian's mentioning here. I mean, I think the, I think the fire department would address that, but I think before we can vote on a, on a waiver, you know, obviously, we've got to see letters from both the fire department.
Are those not a part of the package? There wasn't any letters provided from the fire?
No, I, I received no correspondence from the fire department regarding this application.
Nothing from the fire department, neither did I see.
I know that it was requested, that I needed some sort of correspondence with the board, but apparently, it wasn't done. So I will have to reach out to the fire chief, or, again.
The board is very comfortable waiving parts of their site plan regs that are their sole responsibility. But the requirement in size of cisterns, although in the site plan regs.
Yeah, I was figuring that there was gonna be some sort of correspondence that has been sent to Mark or you, Glenn, but, yeah. With the lack of evidence from the fire, then I understand that you guys can't vote on that waiver.
It, it can't happen.
The high-intensity soil mapping is pretty common.
Yes, that, that waiver is one that we have done pretty regularly.
Many times. Usually it's on a large piece of property, it was a hundred acres, and they were only building on twenty. We would.
It makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, but this, this particular site has no wetlands whatsoever. It's up on a high ground.
It's going just, just to have the evidence that we did it for a reason, a rational reason. So just to be clear, the fifteen thousand gallon cistern was built on the adjoining site?
Yeah, for the storage. It was about three years ago or so?
Yeah, yeah. So, are you, are you suggesting that you were going, that you're asking to put another fifteen thousand gallon cistern on this site?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. The waiver was half the size of the requirement. That's, we were, we're still doing it.
And that, that may make sense if the fire department concurs. I mean, they're close proximity to each other, obviously. Very close proximity. Yeah, I mean, maybe what, a hundred, two hundred feet at most?
Yeah, they're, it's, the cistern for next door is right out front of the, of the property that you have to basically use my client's driveway or entrance to get into the storage facility lot, so it's.
I hate to use the word phrase commonsense, but this may be applicable reference for this particular project.
There wasn't a butter that came to want the last meeting.
It was last month, yeah.
Yeah, did not want his cistern.
To be used.
To be used in the fire suppression calculation.
But, no, I don't know what state, well, what is now, but it used to be, I mean, a fire chief has total control of, of systems like that in the event of an emergency, so. But that's something the fire department will address.
Yeah, like I said, I was hoping for some correspondence, but it looks like I'll have to poke a little, a little harder for that correspondence to make it into the folder.
I would reach out to Jason Grant.
Yeah, that's who I've been talking to, is Jason Grant.
He works one day a week? And on the top of my head, I can't think of what day that is, might be Tuesdays?
I, I think so. Like I said, I had an emailing chain with him, I got him in touch with Eric, they had an emailing chain going on. They also requested some turning, some turning radiuses around the building with, you know, sized vehicles, and I know that that was provided to him. And again, I, I would have hoped to see correspondence saying that I've viewed the turning radiuses, and I'm, I'm okay with that. But, again, I'm with lack of evidence from the Jason Grant in the folder.
To Brian's point, on the bays themselves, has, are you knowledgeable of anybody who's reached out to lease? To get some ideas?
No, no, I don't think anybody's reached out to police.
No, lease.
Oh, lease?
To find out what type of business is gonna go in there.
Oh, no.
Nothing.
I was confused on that, like, fire alarm, I mean, police alarms, I don't.
No.
But no, it's very common for, like I said, electricians and plumbers and whatnot. There's an identical building going on and being constructed that my company did in Hampstead, right by the Hampstead Hannafords. I don't know if you guys have been over there. That's the exact, this is verbatim, I copied, put it on this, on this.
How did Hampstead deal with the occupancy permits for the different bays or occupancy permits for the entire structure? It would seem like, and maybe the fire department could address this question.
The thing about that one is that we had to run municipal water to it. And they, and they had a bump out on the building for sprinklers to be, to be put. In this application, they were actually removing that bump out. It's not reflected on the plans right now. It doesn't make a difference on calcs, because we will not have that sprinkler system in this building. Because it falls under the fire criteria for, if we take away that square footage, it drops below a certain threshold.
So, something, somewhat to address that concern, we usually put a note on the plan that says this plan conforms to all NFPA and, you know, National Fire Code.
Yeah, they, they have a note that says the plan, patent is approved by the fire department.
Oh, good. So, in the case, each time somebody comes into rent, the fire department has to look at it and determine.
Right. Yeah, number thirteen.
That stormwater submission that you sent was something I had never seen the likes of.
Yeah, though, you know, I don't, I don't deal with that from the surveying perspective, but I've had to deliver, deliver them, and I'm like, I don't know if somebody actually reads all these, but it's there.
Oh, it's there, it's definitely there.
All those renderings. Just all that information that the CAD spits out at you.
I guess what I'm getting at is, it may, it may be not a bad consideration of the board to have a site walk on the property. Because I, I read through, I didn't read through all of the forty-some-odd pages of the stormwater management information, but it seemed to come down, when you read T E C's letter, it kind of boils it down to their concern. And they talk about the ditch with the perforated pipe. And they, they, because they ask, and their question was about using, you know, filter fabric or something to keep that perforated pipe from filling in. And then they also requested a maintenance plan. So you can have forty-seven pages of stormwater management information. It really boils down to, how is that plan, is that, the maintenance plan, how, how does that actually work? I mean, we, we just sign off, and I wonder how many of these ever get reported? Does somebody report on a yearly basis as to? It's, it sounds great to say you have to have a maintenance plan, and you can have twenty pages describing what that maintenance plan is. But what, what teeth does the town or any other town, Glenn, use to make sure it's something that's integral to the site?
It comes down to inspection, inspection. Who does inspections? In the town of Kingston, it's the town engineer.
Okay, so that might be a consideration for this board to have a requirement, a note specifying, we'd ask T E C what the inspection interval would be and what it would be comprised of, and have requirement that they or a succeeding town engineer would, would review a maintenance report on a yearly basis or eighteen months, whatever they suggest. But that, I mean, that's, that's important. On another similar site, just up the street, we went with enclosed drainage requirement to ensure that there were, were no problems with that, you know, ditch being compromised. I realize this is a lot less expensive to build this type of.
Yeah.
But, is it, is it durable? Is it, and it looks like it probably could be durable if, in fact, a maintenance program is established and reviewed by, in this case, the town engineer.
That's a, a good idea, but I do want to point out the budgetary impacts of that, that you would need to create a line within your budget that you would have to pay Chris Raymond out of. Because I can't, I can't charge that back to an applicant. So that's something that the, the board has to make sure that that's a budgetary item within your budget. And that's coming up, I'm doing budget right now.
Well, I, I mean, I don't know why the, the ongoing business owners, owner and the succeeding owners should be responsible for that, there should be a way of.
Yeah, but if the planning board is paying their town engineer to do something, it has to be reflected in the budget. There has to be a line to show that funds are coming in and funds are going out.
But then the mechanism for collecting those funds from the property owner, how, how does that work?
That can just be by agreement.
So part, part of the condition of their approval is that they agree to have the yearly inspections or whatever it is. And if they, and then, like Mark says, we have to budget for it, then Mark bills the landowner. And if the owner doesn't pay for that, the owner doesn't pay that fee, then they would be, their, their site plan would be out of compliance.
Is that how the other town does it in terms of recovering? That's roughly how Kingston does it, yes.
You can have these great plans, unless you take care of them.
But you have to be committed to doing that, setting up that escrow account to ensure that the inspections take place.
But would it, would it be an escrow account, or would it be just a yearly billing to the lot owner, landowner?
It's an escrow account in Kingston. I don't. So, in that case. I suppose we could do something differently, but it's an escrow account.
Well, if that, that works, I mean, if the temple's already there for doing that. So they, on a yearly basis, based on the estimated cost of the maintenance review on a yearly basis, they would have to add to that escrow account?
I mean, we typically, like on subdivisions, were in the habit of putting aside fifteen hundred dollars here in Brentwood for a town engineer inspection of the site under construction.
Correct.
So it would be that same sort of.
Sort of mechanism.
Mechanism.
We can, we can work on that. Maybe T E C has a template for that, Mark?
I have a quick question, which probably is more for the engineer, but I guess maybe could relate.
I'll try.
I'm just looking through T E C's comments, comment seventeen about providing truck turning plan to demonstrate a fire engine is able to maneuver a site.
Yeah.
They responded that they prepared a plan. I just am wondering, have they confirmed with the fire department that forty-two foot fire engine is the appropriate fire apparatus to?
I don't, I don't know.
I guess I would just.
Yeah. You know, like, like I said, I'm pretty sure that the Jason Grant got that plan with the radius, because he's the one that kind of requested that.
Okay, perfect.
I'm, like I said, I'll, I'll give him, give him an email and hope that some of that makes its way into the folder of the planning board for next time, and that will kind of erase some of these questions and concerns, I hope.
The last email I received from Jason Grant was eight nineteen, but a completely different parcel.
That's all right. I'll reach out to him, I have no problem with it.
So would, would it be appropriate to make a motion to continue?
Fine with that.
I think so.
Next meeting, or, or further out?
I was, I was just gonna throw it out there. I don't know how quick T E C reviews. I, I don't know when this was sent either. And do you know when this latest revisions in these letters were? I don't know if it was on August twenty-ninth that the letter was, was dated, that they, that all this information was sent back to T E C for a second review? Do you know? Mark?
I do not, hold on.
Just, I guess what I'm getting at is that I would hope that I would have that correspondence from the, from fire and from T E C again, saying, yes, you have, you know, met these points, and then by then, I would hope that we'd be far enough along that conditional approval would be mentioned.
Typically, it doesn't go back out to T E C for a second time. So I've sent them the first plan and got comments.
Okay.
Do the, you've, does the board feel that those comments need to be updated again by Chris?
Yeah, there are some drainage calculations that they need to review.
Okay, so I will send the plan out to, to him right away.
Perfect.
I was unaware of that it needed to go back to him for a second review.
Yeah, I didn't know how some towns do it. Sometimes I get three, four letters from towns here, so I don't, you know.
I think that's kind of at the behest of the board, really, to go through his comments and see if they can be just updated on the plan rudimentary, you know? Or do we need to go back? I think that's a case-by-case basis that this board needs to, you know, review.
In this instance, I think he has enough, he has enough outstanding issues that it should happen.
I agree.
You want me to get closer to that microphone?
Well, I'm trying to see your face. But I always want you to.
It should, it should go back to, to.
Okay, yeah, I'll send it, I'll send it out to him Monday. Is Monday morning acceptable, or I can do it this evening?
I would think Monday morning would be fine. Could you incorporate in that letter to T E C or their request some information on that maintenance plan and how that would work?
Sure. So, i- if the rest of the board is amenable, I would make a motion to continue to the, to September eighteenth, and then if we need to continue, we can, if we, no, is that not, is that still just Tuesday?
Getting comments from Chris Raymond sometimes usually takes the two full weeks.
Okay. So, I'll, I'll make a motion that we continue to October second for the site review for one eighty Route one twenty-five, tax map two sixteen oh two eight zero zero zero.
Second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You know, I withdraw my suggestion that we do a site plan or a site walk. This is fairly clear-cut. And all the questions, I think Steph's onto it, it all revolves around the drainage question.
It's flat. So I don't, I don't think. Based on what we're doing for stormwater.
We've been out there before.
Yeah. Yes, this is just out in the back, we just didn't walk far enough.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Bruce just likes to walk a lot.
He's gotta get his steps in.
He is a walker.
It was all trees out back last time we were there.
That's right?
Thank you.
Next up on the list is Tanya Lane.
Oh, boy.
I printed out three copies of Chris's response, if anybody wants one. There's two. Anybody, anybody want the third one?
Did you already read this? I, I did read it online, I, I guess.
Sure, pass it down, Mark.
I, I didn't want to waste paper, because it's quite extensive.
Yeah.
I'll probably shut down on this, but there's a lot to, a fair amount to go through on that Tanya Lane discussion from the information from T E C. And I, I don't know if there's any possibility to be a planning board subcommittee or just a general work session, I know it's gonna be impossible, but Steph, I think we need somebody with some knowledge. I know it's gonna be impossible, but Steph, I think we need somebody with some, uh, knowledge of what some of these, this information that they're responding with, what it really means practically as to how we proceed to address that. I mean, there's clearly some of the culverts are minus, they're, they're below what the minimum requirements are.
Yeah.
A couple of other ones, they talk about, the manufacturer says that if you're just driving late-duty pickup, they use the word pickup trucks, that three inches of cover is enough.
But they say only temporarily.
Well, temporarily, so I guess my point is here is what I'm getting at.
None of those driveways are anticipated to be temporary.
No, no.
They're anticipated to be there for the duration of the house.
And I, I strongly suspect, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm strongly suspect, suspect that they would like to have this road accepted prior to the expensive winter maintenance program. So I don't know. I guess that would be my question. I'm confused. Now, you've told me before, Mark, but have we had a formal letter from the developer asking for a final bond reduction? And, and/or a request for the board to.
Accept the road.
Accept the road, or make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen to accept the road. I.
I believe we have.
I kind of thought so. But, I mean, I don't think any of us would sign off on a request like that until this situation is resolved. And then if you read, you know, if you guys get reading through the T E C comments that came back.
Here's your, here's your bond reduction request.
There is, okay, so.
Here is a review package. A review.
Yeah.
From Chris. And an ass belt, I believe, as it comes out.
Yep.
There's your ass belt. So all of this, I know I've sent this file out to you.
Yeah, I'm sure you, yeah.
And I will resend it if you, come on, back up. Um, it's all under roadway acceptance. So all information that I've gathered for roadway acceptance, I put in this file. So yes, we've had it. Yes.
A request.
Yeah.
Okay, so I don't believe that members of this board would, would vote in the affirmative on that request until the remediation work has been done on site.
That would have to be in the form of a motion.
In the form of a motion, so to, to get to that point, should we have a, uh, maybe a, I, these, it looks like the next few meetings are fairly busy. Am I correct?
I put all that up calendar. So we, we have one Smith Road on the eighteenth. And I don't believe I have anything scheduled for the next meeting. Usually I just kind of make a little notation.
Yeah.
September, oop, wrong way.
Well, or, or.
Nothing on October, just, well, I will.
So we only have one thing on September eighteen.
Yep, Smith Road, yep.
So would we, would it make sense, uh, I mean, Steph, are you gonna be here that night?
So Brentwood is hosting one of the Gasset hearings on September eighteenth. And I really would like to attend that. It's at six, but I could see.
Well, okay, no, that's, that's reasonable. How about, how about this? What if we were to invite Chris Raymond to come here on one of the next few Wednesdays when Glenn's in town? And we spend about a half hour, call it an hour, to go down through his report and come up with a list of recommendations to be subcommittee or, and any, all members of the board. We just post, post a meeting with Glenn on Wednesday, that the planning board will hold a work session such and such a time. And we, we come up with a definitive list of what this board thinks needs to be done, accomplished.
And just tell R O C that's what the story is.
Correct, that they're not going to get the bond reduction. And I'm assuming that they're gonna put pressure on the town to have this accepted again before the winter season. But it's their responsibility to make these corrections, and I don't think that we, that these two temporary culverts they're talking about, if they don't plan to address those and make those permanent, then I say you guys don't get the road accepted until next spring, next summer.
So I'm here the tenth, the seventeenth, and the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
When am I next?
Do you know what your schedule is? I mean, how busy you are?
There, there is time in every one of those days for us to do this.
So it, is, with the.
So it's really dependent upon when Chris can come.
Yeah, I've gotta reach out to Chris.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but if you gave him one of those three days and said, hey, could you come at two o'clock in the afternoon, or whatever time you guys wanted to come? And, you know, we, we ask him these specific questions. Now, one of our requests, and then I'll stop talking about this because there's lots you can read in those packets, but one of the requests we made of him is to give us copies of the approved permits, signed permits by T E C, which he did, all right? One of the requirements on his signed permit says that headwalls will be constructed on both ends of the culvert. Now, I want to put Chris on the spot, or I was gonna try to put, um, Steph on the spot. What is a rational, commonsensical, reasonable headwall? It's not like five stones that are tipping over when you walk on, all right? I mean, there's, so that's why I think we, we need to sit down and, and have a good buttress case of exactly what we feel. And then we, we can even bring that, if not many members can attend that meeting, then we bring that to our next planning board meeting and say it is the board in concurrence with our request.
So we see if he can meet with us either the tenth or the seventeenth.
You have on a, a nine-thirty, a ten o'clock on the tenth.
So I mean.
I'm just.
We have tons of time.
Yep.
On either of those days.
Yeah, I'd like to be there if I can, so can you be posted? And we can dive into it at that meeting, but a few thoughts I had after reading through it was, I know I'm so semi-planning board hat on, but with my engineer hat, I can't help myself. I have some concerns about how he interpreted the, uh, cover dimension. He seems to be calculating it from the top of the pipe to the top of the pavement surface, but if you look at their spec for flexible pavement, which is what asphalt is, should be measured to the bottom of the pavement. So we're losing a few inches there, too.
His parents is or even less.
Yeah, and the, I mean, I know he's saying he talks to the manufacturer and they allow eight inches for residential or low use, but if you look in the spec, the minimum cover to avoid flotation is nine inches. So I'm like, I feel like we need to talk about it.
I mean, I, I'll go in the market and say, I don't think we've been well-served by T E C on this request that we have for them. It's just, it did, to a third grader, some of the things they're saying does, just don't make sense, just not commonsensical.
And then another concern, if we do, and we'll have to talk to him about this, but we do go down the path of requiring them to fix it and install new pipes with appropriate cover, they're going to have to do grading adjacent to the pipes to make that work because the swales coming into it are also shallow, which is going to make a steeper drop-off on the edge of the road, which is not ideal. So it's like a snowball effect of problems.
But in, in, we've always with our town engineer made field changes. Once a subdivision plan was approved, you get out there and, you know, you get into a wet spot or something, you need to put filter fabric down. You know, the engineer's always has made what I, laypeople think are good decisions, so we may have to have some compromise there. I mean, I realize that we are somewhat compromised in the sense that we, you know, did not pick up on the fact that we needed the R C P pipe. Now, after forty-five, fifty-some-odd years of using the R C P, we don't have to change our, our culvert specs in our subdivision regs because those are solid. There's never been a problem I've ever seen in fifty years. So luckily, all we have to do is deal, we have to get through this case, modify what we can to make it somewhat has to smell, pass the smell test, and if.
Yeah.
If you can help us do that, then that would be.
Yeah, definitely.
There's a, um, loose piece of paper that I included in your pilot package. That's a, a email from Kristen that I got before the meeting this evening. And I just want you guys to be aware of that and to read that.
Yeah, I, I would strike what I said and put her context in.
Why I pointed out the.
Yeah, I, I personally would want to hold twelve inches from top of pipe to bottom of asphalt as the minimum, but.
I kind of had a little chuckle when I saw float.
I, I called that step a professional courtesy, it was being extended by T E C.
Yeah.
That's the one thing about reinforced concrete pipe, it don't float.
Right.
Actually, it would in certain circumstances.
So what, so.
Saltwater?
So what are we saying?
Um, we'll try to meet whenever Chris is available and.
And prefer, so preferably the tenth or the seventeenth.
Yeah, on, out of those dates.
Okay, so he listed off the tenth and everybody's leaning to the seventeen?
Yeah, I mean, I have a couple of meetings, but we can.
Everybody's leaning to the seventeenth, okay.
And none of them are like.
It could be advisable, Mark, we could work around Steph's.
Yeah.
Yeah, my, the meetings I have are ones I can skip. I would love to skip them, actually, so. Let's schedule it for when they are. Sorry.
Let me help.
Is that on the record?
You're being recorded.
Man, I'm, I'm assuming T E C under, you know, Chris Raymond understood like what we were asking, sort of the. I, I don't know if you can answer, you know, for them or not, but.
I don't know if he's super focused on us right now. I don't get that.
Well, and, and that raises, you know, question and, and concern.
Yeah.
But maybe he doesn't want to be the bad guy.
Because I'm, I'm not, you know, I heard professional courtesy come out, but I don't even know that it's that. It just may be, you know, not. I don't know, lack of focus or.
But we're paying him.
Well, I, right.
And corporate people are developing that, aren't paying.
Correct.
I, I mean, this is just my opinion. I, I'm not sure how appropriate it is for us as a board to be starting to ascribe motives or lack of motive or anything like that.
Fair comment.
No, I think it's, it's just frustration, that is what we're expressing here. I think the frustration is building to the point where we may need to look further. But then you get another case like the Mostriano case or the, well, yeah, the Mostriano case that we're, we're talking about and, and also the Samborn one that we're talking, thinking about. Their comments there are pretty much spot-on.
Right.
So.
So let's, let's have this meeting with him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you have questions about his work, ask the questions about his work.
I, I think that, that we're on the right track, that we asked him to compile this information for us to be able to look at, and now we've looked at it and we want to talk with him about it.
Yep.
And, and we've spent a lot of time coming to that decision.
So you, somebody's gonna let us know.
I think Mark's gonna.
I will, I will create this, uh, uh, meeting. I will give him a call and make sure that that date is appropriate. Uh, what time works best for him, I will send that out, um, as a group email to the planning board email address. And you stay tuned to your, your email address, your government email address, and you will receive that information.
Before we go, I better get that.
What do you mean?
Well, you're gonna send it to me, right?
Okay, you two need to talk about that separately.
Really?
All right, next on the list are P C R S A book order.
Yeah, so it's that time of year again, um, to order our books. Um, we ordered fourteen and you get two free, so we got sixteen. Um, I looked at the other communities and, and their orders are kind of all over the map. One community orders like twenty of them. So I talked to some select board members and, um, I think it's appropriate because of all the changes that we've all gone through that we all get issued a new book, if you want one.
Are they available online?
Probably.
The statutes are available.
Yeah, the statutes are available.
This, this book is a compendium of statutes that are selected just in the hopes that it affects planning.
Okay, so it's kind of curated.
For laborers, it's really easy to go. So this, this is an attempt to make sure that all the R S As that we would typically deal with are reflected in.
Is that book available in a PDF, do we know?
Um, mine resides on my desk. I, I don't.
Like, I'm just trying to save the town some money.
It used to be available, well, it used to be available by C D. So I, I have to expect it, it's available by PDF.
Part of the order form, you can order it in PDF, but it costs just as much as the book.
And then, then for us non-P D Fers, you have to scroll through all of it.
Can we share the PDF though? Can you order that?
I have no idea.
Can we have one?
Hire it.
Yeah, I don't know, probably.
We may not want to declare that publicly, though.
Well, no, if it's allowed, like.
Oh, yeah, true.
What is it, seven bucks?
Shared site.
Ten.
Ten bucks.
Not forcing everyone else to use PDF, but.
Well, the thing is.
Books are only ten bucks?
Yeah, they're ten dollars if you do it through the R P C's agreement, and they're two hundred and thirty if you want to buy them.
Right, yeah, because I.
By themselves.
I don't get that particular book, but I get it for other, you know, areas.
It's insane, the, the fact that these are ridiculously low-priced.
So you, that's my point. Take advantage of it.
It's Lexus for you.
Take advantage of it. I use, mine is a Bible on my desk. I use it almost daily.
Yeah, for ten bucks, that's a bargain.
Could we look into whether we can have like a shared PDF for situations where.
It's only ten bucks.
No, but like sometimes if we need to look something up.
I thought it was the two thirty.
I don't like to carry books or.
Well, Jimmy Azar's listening in on this meeting.
We will get one of the PDFs.
I'm in trouble.
And, and find that out.
Okay, yeah, if it's.
But I mean, literally, it is a steal.
For ten bucks.
For ten bucks, steal.
I had assumed it was like the two, two hundred plus price.
Access to it on the.
So what I'm, I'm asking permission to get, uh, twenty of them.
Yeah.
I'll actually get twenty-two because I get two free.
You'll get two free.
Why that many?
Well, just.
I handed, I got, I got fourteen before.
Yeah.
Okay, with two free, and I don't have any left. All my Z B A members, all my planning board members.
Okay.
Um, to Glenn, to me.
And if you do five for the Board of Selectmen.
And I want to give the Board of Selectmen the option to have one as well, and I, I asked Jim Mashad if he would like one. Um, and he said yes.
They go, well.
And Liddy's gonna want one, and I, if for ten bucks, it's.
Yep.
Yeah, it's still.
It's a wealth of information.
It's less than an hour of legal service.
You're, you're cra- you're crazy not to do it.
Crazy not to, so.
Crazy not to.
So if, uh, do we need a motion, or we can just all shake our head like, hey, that's great?
Yeah, they can, the board can just direct you to do it.
Let's do it, no motion.
There you go. So twenty books, two free.
Yeah, I know for, uh, some of the areas that we practice in, like for example, you know, property management or landlord tenant, stuff like that.
Okay, next on the list.
It's insane.
It's ridiculous.
It's insane.
Or just even for the court rules, two hundred and thirty bucks, so.
Because you, you realize you can go on the state website and.
Right.
Do searches for anything.
Exactly.
But when they compile them for you by topic, it makes a huge difference.
I know, I know.
Makes a huge.
It's not good for billable hours, though, Paul. You have that thing running through your desk.
All right, um, next is a ten-year plan update. So I got some good information at the last TAC meeting. So the draft ten-year plan has been released and due to inflation, operational spending outpacing incoming revenue among un- other reasons. The ten-year plan was initially overprogrammed by about four hundred million dollars. So D O T has made some recommendations to address this shortfall, including the following. Reallocate one hundred thirty-two million in federal funds from individual projects to paving and bridge repairs with the logic that just focus on maintaining the system instead of new projects. Uh, they've removed the Bo Concord project. Um, they've removed constr- like, construction funds for that project off the ten-year plan. Design will proceed through N I P A. That's a major, huge project on I ninety-three. Um, similar approach to the Manchester exit six and seven project, they've removed construction from the ten-year plan. They've delayed construction on fifteen projects to beyond twenty thirty-six. And th- this is, the next couple bullets are the ones that really affect us. They've canceled thirty-four projects altogether, completely removed from the ten-year plan.
Approved, approved for previous.
Yeah, and several of those are projects that were R P C priority projects in previous rounds, which is very frustrating. Um, and they've canceled all the new R P C priority projects, which is the Brentwood South Road intersection. We have a couple of projects on the long-range transportation plan, but not on the ten-year plan. Uh, so the ones that have been canceled will remain on the long-range transportation plan, but that's basically just like a tracking document.
That's all it is.
There's no commitment.
It's advisory.
Um, so this is all draft. So this is all draft. My take in talking to Dave Walker, the feeling is, D O T isn't allowed to set policy, so we feel what they're doing is kind of saying like, hey, we can't set policy, we're short on money. This is what we recommend, knowing it's gonna piss everybody off and like hoping that maybe that will trigger people to consider revenue enhancements, which are politically unfavorable. Um, because one way to address this would be to increase toll fees. And or, um, increase the fuel tax. So we, our opportunity is, they have, um, what are called Gasset hearings. Where the executive counselors and representatives from D O T and R P C present to the local communities the draft tenure plan. Open it up to public comment. So that's, that's the chance really to go and suggest, you know, air your grievances on, you know, you don't approve of them removing our project or projects in our region. And raise the suggestion of considering raising taxes to offset the shortfalls.
Well, so I, I think it, it certainly makes sense for us to, to be there. Has that, has the date been set for the?
Yeah, and I can send an email with the dates. The, the ones that have been officially scheduled, next Thursday, the eleventh, seven P M at Central School in Greenland. Monday, the fifteenth, at six thirty, Claremont Savings Bank Community Center in Claremont. Tuesday, September sixteenth, six P M, Manchester Community College. Thursday, September eighteen, six P M, Brentwood Rec Center. And then there are a couple more that as of last Thursday, they weren't officially scheduled, but they're tentatively penciled in. September twenty-ninth in Dairy, October first in Hampton, and October sixteenth in Plastow. I don't have any time or location details.
Yes, yeah, so I, yeah, hu- hugely disappointing, but I re- really appreciate all, all your work, Steph. And, um, yeah, so I, I think that that would be a good next step, you know, you can send us those dates, cause I think it makes sense for us to make our voice heard. Um, and leading up to that, maybe we should follow up with Counselor Stevens just to get, cause I think that she'll be, I think she'll give us honest advice. In terms of the best path forward for us, um, regardless of how much she can help or not, cause I, she's, you know, limited in what she can do, of course. But I think that she'll, she'll be honest with us about, but what next steps probably will look like.
More about the political scene, but what's your take if people come in numbers to these hearings and are pushing for taxes? Do you think that's what will change their opinion on that?
It, it, it's, it's tricky because the, so, yes, I, I, I mean, public pressure is, is always effective. And, and so that, that's why I think that it makes a lot of sense for us to be there and, you know, voice our, our displeasure with how this has played out. The public pressure certainly has an impact. Um, I will say that in the past, when the executive council has considered toll increases, uh, I believe Counselor Prescott, back when he was on the council, proposed it. That tend, at least at that time, it's, there was a lot of public pressure once that came out, the other way to, to not do that. So, yes, it's effective, but it, it also, i- it, it will probably cut both ways, especially when it comes to taxation. But it's still really important for us to, e- e- not, for us to be there just so that they know that we're paying attention at the very least and, and, and that, you, you know, we're not gonna go away and we're not gonna give up.
I think it's important to encourage our legislators to attend. If you guys are comfortable, I could reach out to Eric and Melissa and make sure they're aware of at least someone in Brentwood and.
Yeah, I, I can make that next step for me, I can reach out to Counselor Stevens.
Yeah, it's, it's tough. I mean, obviously, we all think these projects are important, but it's, uh, this understanding if the general public feels the same way and trying to convince them of why they're important. I mean, just kinda anecdotally, I was talking to my mom about this, a case study of one, getting her opinion. What do you, you know, would you support a moderate tax increase to fund these critical transportation projects? And she's like, on a fixed income, are you kidding me? Okay.
Their priorities, the big talk the last couple days on TV has been the further extension of that median, uh, barrier, one ninety-five. So they, they approved that, I don't know, how many, forty-five million bucks or something a week ago. Now, Counselor Stevens is on last night, proposing, and I guess there's some traction, they're gonna extend that double the length of that. So that's. Sure, cause there's been four accidents.
Four accidents in the last.
In six weeks.
Yeah, and I mean, one of the things that.
Cause that is, your, your political, um, acuity on that, be serious.
Yeah, be serious.
You have, you have a Republican counselor exposing themselves to a Democratic person saying in the future, well, you voted for a tax increase.
Yeah.
There's no way she's gonna put herself in that situation, where something as esoteric as transportation improvements.
Well, I feel like if we lean into the safety angle, a lot of the projects they nix have serious safety implications.
Well, i- i- and, and I just want to clarify, when I was talking about Counselor Stevens, I, I didn't say that she would agree with us, I said she would be honest with us.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, I, 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 I was very careful how I worded it.
Being a challenge to get any.
Yeah.
Where's mom from? Go freaking away.
Yeah, it's like, mom, come on. She's like. No, it's, I mean, it's good to know, like, the, the average person is in a hyper-focus. Yeah, but anyways, that's, that's the update on that. Um, you know, it's getting late, we already pushed off approving the minutes last time. We, have you guys had a chance to review all the minutes?
One more.
Okay.
I did some, make some changes on the, in the eight, seven, get the dates right, eight, seven. Uh, I did go back and reread, reread them and did make some changes to them. Cause I think that's one of your concerns was, were the eight, seven ones.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion, motion to remove the, um, August seventh minutes from the table. Cause we put, we laid it on the table, so we have to take it off the table and then, yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll, I'll move approval of the, of the August seventh minutes.
Wait, sorry, are we?
First you took a lot, first you took it off the table.
Took it off the table.
Now you're voting to approve them.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And I will.
Yeah, I gotta, slow down. The motion to remove them from the table was unanimous.
Yes.
I heard an inception over there, you backed the attention, okay, okay, scribble, scribbling, Mr. Ramsdale offer there. And the abstain, okay.
I was giving counsel.
Yes, hundred percent.
That counsel was, um, in the event, you're not here for the meeting, but you read the minutes, you can still vote.
You absolutely can.
Yeah.
I bet if you're here for the meeting, but.
That's a personal choice.
Yeah, so I, I'll, I'll, I'll move approval of August twenty-first.
Second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Now, we did, we did have a motion to approve the eight, seven ones as well.
Yes, and that was approved.
Okay. Who, who, who's?
Second was Bruce.
Um, no, so.
No, Bruce was second.
So for, for August seventh, I made the motion and Doug seconded it. And then for twenty-one, it was myself and then Bruce seconded.
Okay, and it was the same for, to take it, remove it from the table, first and second.
Okay, correct.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other business that may legally come for the board?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to say, and I know it's late, so it's gonna be very short. Uh, I personally need to issue an apology to Mark for some of the remarks that I made at the last meeting, which were basically suggesting that he was at fault for some of the, um, concerns I had that the board ultimately is responsible for. So I unfairly referenced his name. And it really is, my concern that we aren't following certain procedures, uh, is really not the fault of Mark. And it being the agent of the board, but that responsibility lies with this full board. And so I'd like to have a, uh, be included on, in, on the agenda for the next meeting to, you know, talk about those couple concerns I have. But I did want to at least get in tonight that I was wrong, I screwed up and, um.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
It's late, I can't, like, my time is running out. But no, I wanted to say that, uh, I feel that, you know, Mark is learning and he's done a lot of good work for the town. Uh, and some of those responsibilities I was concerned about, again, I think, uh, our decisions are, this board's responsibility as a body.
Stop while, you, you stop while you're ahead. That was, that was wonderful.
I accept your apology, Mr. Stevens. I think, I think there's mu- much more to the story.
Correct.
Um, and the facts of the matter that you may or may not be privy to. I would like nothing more in on planet earth to work together as a conducive unit, which is open and honest with each other. My door is always open. My phone is always ready to be answered. Anybody can come in and ask any question that they want, especially retired people with all the time in the world.
You may regret that.
No, I would never regret that.
I've had to knock.
If we argue and we fight, we may say to each other, I respectfully disagree with you, and we will go away. And then we'll still be friends, Bruce.
Well, that's it, and I think that, uh.
And that's an important thing to remember, that door is always open, my phone is always ready to be answered. For anybody who has, I extend that to anybody on this board.
And I, I agree with you, I think that, you know, maybe there's some policy, uh, reviews or not reviews, but just positions that we, we might want to reiterate as a board.
I think there's a lot to that situation that you, that you don't know, and I look forward to discussing it with everyone.
Thank you, and I'll make a motion to just point to adjourn tonight's meeting.
One more thing, uh, next week, uh, R P C, six thirty, coming up.
On the ten.
On the ten, just F Y I. We have a site walk on Saturday. A site walk on Saturday.
We have a site walk this Saturday.
Oh, yeah, is.
Where?
Smith Road.
Was able to go?
Nine o'clock.
Nine A M.
Hey, one, one last thing, it, it, I was at the, the select board meeting this past Tuesday, it seems like on the financial front of the town, things are moving in different directions, shall we, shall we say, with new responsibilities going to people. You made a, a comment, um, at the last meeting about getting a manifest on it, on expenditures to do with the planning board.
No, Bruce is. Bruce is a hundred percent correct in that, and this is an issue that I am well aware of, and I've been constantly moving forward to get a resolution to it. This is not something that I don't know that exists, and this is not something that I don't know that doesn't need to be done.
Oh, and I, I don't.
So Julie, please, let me, could I finish, please?
I don't accuse Mark of not doing that, but, and Mark did send us all the resilience invoices here, which I had a chance to look at today. I guess my point is that before a check goes out, just like with the Board of Selectmen, the invoice should come to this board.
You are a hundred percent correct, sir, a hundred percent correct, and I'm actively, we're working forward to that. I've been meeting with Julie, we've identified some accounts that need to be talked about and addressed. I'm currently working on the budget, there's some things in the budget that need to be addressed as well. Um, I'm accumulating this information, but it's not something that I'm not aware of and actively moving forward to resolve. But, Mr. Stevens, you are absolutely correct, that needs to come to this board.
Prior, with some past administrative assistants, they actually kept their books and wrote checks, you know, from that book. I know that, that was taken away from you, I just taken away as part of.
It's a, it's a poor choice of words, yes, I was given that option. Now, let, let, let me give you a little bit of history and a little bit of background to that. If you had started a job and then three weeks later, someone was, and, and the situation that developed within this building came along, and then someone came to you and says, hey, how would you just not like to do finances? What's, what would be your stock answer to that? Good, fine, great.
Seems to be more uniform if it all goes through one system.
Well, the system was broken at the time as well, this is how this whole thing got about. We were using a QuickBooks system that was twelve years old, and it couldn't even communicate with my computer. That, that's how antiquated it was and how broken it was. And we were trying to resolve this and get this new thing and the new QuickBooks, and then that, it was a whole situation. And then it was proposed to be, hey, how about, we're gonna get a finance director, you don't have to deal with that anymore, right? And after the powder keg that was lit here, I think anyone with a sound mind would go, oh, finances? I don't have to deal with that? Wonderful, that was a mistake on my behalf, and I admit that solely, that was a mistake on my behalf. But I think any one of us in this room probably would have made that same decision.
May, maybe I'm confused, I mean, you, you don't, I, I wouldn't encourage you to take that role back on of writing the checks. I would just like to see.
Nope, we're working with Julie on it right now, but she has a lot of stuff on her, this is, she's only three weeks in.
I don't think you made a mistake. I don't think you made a mistake. I think you made the right call.
I'm admitting like, yes, this should have been done a long time ago. And, and unfortunately, it's been an unfortunate set of circumstances with getting this person into this position. I'm aware of it, I'm actively moving forward, cause I want to get that done for you.
I, I wasn't trying to point fingers, I just want to make sure we.
You deserve an answer to that, you deserve an answer to that, a hundred percent, you deserve an answer to that. And I'm working forward to get that done for you.
Motion, motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right.